Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
All right, you told me in order, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I don't think so. I'll check.
I will make a motion to set the minutes of the meeting from 6:20 and the special meeting of 7:08. All right, public comments.
Yes, my first name is Dolly F. H., and my last name is Stevens. I have lived on the G. W. Stevens estate in Athens since 1946, which means that I've been in Athens longer than anyone in this room. That's longer than the two oldest people who turned 95 this year in August and September. As everyone knows, I was abused in town in 2004 by the man I was taking care of who had early onset dementia. I landed in Springfield Hospital. No town leaders came to help me. Brother-in-law of an Athens selectman and his family, plus three others, like when an Athens leader voluntarily made me beg for a chicken leg. That was to be the only meat I was to have all week. Thank goodness other people at the food shelf found out I didn't live that week. Fast forward, my husband died after 20 years in a nursing home. My income tripled in 2015 from the $500 I was used to living on. My bills were paid, so I started helping others. I'm giving away one-third of my income each month. My bills are still paid. I heard we have some dogs in town. Without an up-to-date license, no dogs should ever be shot because the owner can't afford to... It is not legal for any person to ever kill another person's dog on that person's land. I will be glad to pay for those needing licenses. Please clean up the trash on your properties, whether you live as an owner or a renter. If you need a green trash bag, please contact me. I would be glad to give you one. We must clean up this town and not just come to the Select Board and complain about other people's homes. Let's have a history in the State of Vermont Tax Department. I was the first taxpayer to ever have a fee put on my taxes before the state even worked on my rebate and by the first person who was not sent a bill by a town treasurer. I would like to make an offer to you, Sandy, of $600 if you would please resign by July 31, 2019. This is my money I'm offering in cash or check. I was told you already agreed to resign on March 3, 2020. Thank you.
You should direct any public comments to the Select Board, not to any other officers or...
Yes, sir, I understand that.
So, Don, public comments.
Well, I don't have Board status anymore on the school-related stuff, but that was one of several residents that was part of the Forest Union District vote on Monday night. We affirm the officers that were elected by their individual boards to represent the Athens, Crafton, Westminster, whatever they call that district.
William Northeast Elementary School District.
There you go. And basically, they took the individual budgets of the three towns and tossed them into one big pot along with all the bills. My take on the voting to approve that budget was just each town affirming the other two towns' citizens that the budget that they passed back last March. There was one gentleman from Westminster that challenged the program that Westminster had passed, but the response to that was that they didn't want to change the figures that were put forward as a result of what the taxpayers had voted for this past March. And Jack Brier, the Crafton, was concerned that Athens was getting slammed with a much higher tax rate as a result of this consolidation. Might have seemed reasonable, but I checked the... Again, the key word here is estimated. The estimated tax that we had on our Athens Town School Report was $1.22.5, and the estimated tax rate for Athens with this Forest Union is $1.23.7.
I checked in our policy book today because I was curious if we had it, and I didn't see anything.
I thought we did have the policy, but...
Is it possible to dig it up and put it in the policy book if we've done that?
If it's not there, I'm not sure I'd look, but I thought we did a conflict policy when we were doing some policies here a couple, three years ago.
I wasn't thinking about it.
I think we did. But I can look and see if...
And there's a... I just printed out a link to like a boilerplate, one that V. L. C. T. apparently put together for towns to sign and make their own if you needed that still.
Yeah, I would...
I thought we had...
I thought we did, but if it's not in the policy book, if you can't find it, we will look and bring that back next month, so... See? Nothing? Public comments?
No, public comments. Were we at the school, using the school for the vacation by the school?
Bring in the town boards and officials. All right, town boards.
Will come in and download our program, and we will be offset, and then you guys can decide what to do with this. The hard drive will have to be wiped before it goes anywhere. And I have not agreed not to run in 2020. I consider a slap in the face being offered $600 to resign as of the end of July. I consider that bribery, and that's all I have to say to that.
Okay. Boards and officials?
Yes, as on the...
They seem open to the idea of the Gusset Plan that I proposed, but they're looking at an old email from a month and a half ago, and it doesn't seem as though they're... They realize that we've exhausted all other options. So, I mean, Sherry and I were both clear that way. We just wanted their approval on this concept so we could move forward and get a structural engineer. Caitlin Corkins, who we dealt with, I don't know, she kind of weighed in on some structural opinions, but it's like, you know, we're getting a little tired of, you know, farm engineering solutions, including my own. It's time that I... I have an idea. I want to see if a structural engineer will... I mean, he might take on plans and say, "No, this is not a good idea." I don't know. I don't know if the board is... I don't remember if I... I meant to make a brief conversation, but I haven't.
I think we did see the...
Yeah, I don't know. You can look at it. I don't want to get into details right now. I may be guilty of... I may be guilty of too much detail there. I thought we were about ready to actually start doing something.
How much do we think an engineer will cost?
Don was suggesting no more than 100... 1,500. I guess Sherry talked to...
He subcontracted to a number of structural people when it comes to that.
But, I mean, he has looked this... All of them over, hasn't he already?
If he doesn't have the...
Does he? Who does the committee want to hire?
Sherry was going to look further into trying to track down this Ted Fellows in Wolf Hall, but I think she was all right with this Matthew Beck if we could get him trying to get somebody closer so that, you know, travel time and stuff wouldn't add up.
Paul Paul in Jamaica, about the same distance. I'm not sure.
I just think...
My take on the committee, and I kind of supported this, is, you know, we had a recommendation from Jonathan Jessup, and we, you know, and, you know, it must be based on past experience in working with timber frames, so we thought it was worth chasing down that recommendation.
What... Looked at your plan for here, too, didn't he?
Yeah, Matthew gave us... He basically ran the numbers on my ideas for this place here.
When... I got another question for you guys. When is the Meeting House Committee going to make a little payment back in town?
That's a good question.
They seem to be spending and spending and spending, and they don't pay the bills. I thought, "When are they going to make a payment?"
I understand that. I have no idea. In fact, I was going to give this to the Select Board. Here's some of the money that we've raised this year, and the grant, the Crosby Grant's in there, from the three fundraisers we've had so far, which is around $1,500 just from the fundraisers. And that money is all going into the Historical Society.
In ways that...
I propose that at least 50% of it come to the town account for the Meeting House, and I was voted down 3 to 1.
Well, you would think, seeing the town owe the money, that at least $100 a week would... A month or whatever would show that they're interested in paying. You know, and I don't know. Where do they get the money to put these things on? Do they come out of the town account?
No.
Or do they come out of that one?
No. The only money, seeing the Crosby Grant, was written under the town, so that you got the grant from Crosby. Seeing I'm not a member, I can't ask that, but on behalf of myself as a committee for this...
What do you mean, you're not a member?
She's not a member of the Historical Society.
I'm not a member of the Historical Society.
She's just a member... She's just...
But you're handling money on both sides, and you're not a member? I don't even sound like...
No, she's not handling money on the Historical Society.
I'm not handling money, but no, I'm not a member of the Historical Society.
What are you going to do to be a member?
I think it's $50 to join.
And then you can see all the bucks and everything?
I believe that's the stipulation, so...
And who do I get to join?
I think you can do it on...
Nothing is getting done. It's costing us more and more money. We never have a solid plan. We never have a solid bill estimate, and you keep coming back. We need more money. We need more money. We need more money.
Are you for it? I can't dispute that.
And so you want us to give you $1,500 for the structural engineer? And who knows? Maybe what we want to do, he's going to say no anyway, and then we're going to be back to square one, and then you guys are going to come back to us again and say, "Oh, we need another... More money for this," or "More money for that."
Well, I thought that Chris Coles had seen Don's plan and thought that that would work, although if he does not have the structural engineering, I thought that was what we were told at one meeting.
I think at one meeting, we were debating towards that, and that's why we asked about him being our project manager or something on this, and...
I apologize for embarrassing you with all these questions. It shouldn't just be you.
That's fine.
But I'm just very frustrated right now.
You're not alone.
Because they say that they have these fundraisers to raise money to help the Meeting House, and then it goes into the Historical Society, but then yet they want the town to pay for everything.
Yes, according to my figures from what we were told last town meeting, but I don't like that.
I still say go with Don, who would... Don, he's an engineer that he worked with.
All right, so do you want to make that a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
Don?
My only lingering concern is Vermont Historical Preservation, that they know Jonathan Jessup, and in applying for future grants, there may be some gain in staying with that camp. That's my only caution on that. And Matthew will do a funny job of figuring the structural part of this.
All right. Why don't we make a motion to approve 1,500 and not set down who the engineer will be?
I'm going to vote against it.
And have it paid half of it.
And we can't make...
We can't make that stipulation because if not, Historical Society is not part of the town. They would have to come propose that to us when they ask for the money.
Well, I think we're going to have to fight with Denise. When they can get back with better answers, then I'll vote for stepping ahead with the plan they got up there. But until I... Until somebody can give us better answers, I...
Week is the 3rd, Thursday?
19th would be the 3rd or the 20th? I don't know if I can see it. The 20th is the 3rd Tuesday.
And is that also the 3rd Thursday in the same week?
Yes.
Okay.
So I will tell them that they need to...
No, no, the 19th... The next Select Board meeting will be the 15th of August, not the 22nd.
Oh, that's right, because the first is on...
Thursday, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
But it'll be really Thursday. No, before our meeting.
Well, we will be meeting at our next concert camp, so maybe we can have a small set-to when they can come up and say...
Well, I just feel like the wool is trying to be pulled over our eyes because you keep giving us... Not you personally, but the Meeting House Committee keeps giving us plans, and then it either gets changed, or, "Oh, we need more money." "Oh, it's much more than we thought." I mean, yeah, I can understand an estimate going a little bit over, but it's getting out of control. I love that building, and I wish it would stand, but something needs to be done that is more certain than you do this little teeny piece, and then you have to do 10 other things just because you did that one little thing. And I understand it's an old building, but we keep throwing money into it, and we're not ever, ever going to get a payback to make it worth our while.
Well, I mean, it's not going to pay for itself. I mean, we all realize that.
But it's too nice of a building to let it fall in the heat, too.
That's true.
A lot of history up there, but they've got to get... They've got to get the plan in order.
Well, I will make a motion that we authorize the Meeting House Committee to hire a... To hire an engineer, and if the... If they come up with the funds to do that outside of the town funds, that will be fine, that we authorize that. And that you can hire either of the two engineers that we've been discussing.
Because the Historical Society keeps having fundraisers, and the money's going to the Historical Society and not helping in a great deal with the preservation of that building.
All right. Do you have that motion, Sandy?
Let's see, so far I have motion to authorize the Meeting House Committee to hire an engineer and pay for...
Without town funding.
The engineer without funds, with funds other than town funds. They can come back to the August Select Board meeting. Give me something.
If that isn't possible.
If that isn't possible.
And to... And they can choose between the two engineers discussed.
Which was Jessup or Don's?
Well, it wasn't Jessup. It was Fellows, right?
Yeah, between Fellows or Beck.
Okay.
Is there a second to that? All those in favor? Is that reasonable?
Reasonable to me.
Anything else?
No, as far as paying it back, that's something...
Maybe the...
All right, I was mentioning one thing. We did a little research into health insurance plans, and I have listed what the current offering is from the Vermont providers, and it was helpful for me just to get clarity on the process of, like, enrolling people.
Is it through Vermont Connect, right?
It's not. Well, it's direct with the providers for a small business, like for a VA employer. But I also spoke with V. L. C. T. to see what other towns are doing for health insurance offerings, and we pretty much... I mean, there's details that I won't go into, but we're pretty much right in the ballpark of what other towns are doing as far as the level of plan that we're offering and the amount that we're matching. It's not particularly news, but I think it's...
That we're about where we are.
Validating, yeah, where we're at.
All right.
Cemetery...
Am I allowed to call on you? No.
Not on boards and officials.
Not for boards and officials.
Go ahead.
Cemetery stuff, the George W. Stevens Trust...
No.
Ring burials. And I wasn't familiar with the subject during that meeting. Sandy and I have attended a seminar since.
Did you say ring burial?
Ring burials.
Green, sorry.
I had thought we were talking about something else and kind of led the discussion on a different path, but it did be something worthy of bringing back up to discussion during our September meeting when we all get back together. Expense-wise, we're on track, and I think that's it.
Okay. Boards and officials?
I got a call today from Nemrick, and he said that we were in very good position to set a date for collecting taxes. He said we should go for October 15 instead of September... October 10, I'm sorry, instead of September 10, because then we would not have to do two taxes, because most towns are going to have to do two tax bills because the budget will not be approved until August 15. It is September 10. I got an email from V. L. C. T., because I called them, and they said that according... And we looked up the statute, and according to statute, as long as there's 30 days notice to send that before the bill is due, then we could do that. And I talked with... And like I said, I contacted V. L. C. T., and they wrote me back, and somehow I lost it, but I was going to read it to you, but they tended to say the same thing, as long as it's 30 days notice before the bill goes out, or when the bill goes out, and it's 30 days notice as to when the due date is.
But I am questioning...
It was a voted article at town meeting that we set the date at September 10.
Yes, and I'm not sure that we ourselves can just then change that.
I think... Can I just add a little bit of clarification? I think on the statute, the statute is basically saying, like, well, if you don't get the tax bills out 30 days before, say, September 10, well, then... So instead of getting them out on August 10, you got them out on August 20, well, then the due date would have to be September 10.
August...
August 15.
August 15 will have the school tax rate.
I understand that, but she's got to set the tax bills out 30 days prior to when they're due.
Yeah, I understand that.
And that would be set then October 10.
But we say, we leave it printed September 10, but not have them go delinquent until October 10.
I'll find out if that's...
Why don't we check with V. L. C. T., get them to give us hard and fast something in writing that says if we can do that and go with that? The other thing might be, I understand the state wants to wait until the time period to appeal the vote is done, but I should think that it would be pretty easy for them to give us the figure now, and...
Yeah, but if you print it on a tax bill, and then they decide to change something or something... Someone argues something, then it has to be done again.
I understand, but I'm... What, Don, you went to meet, and I tried to go, but I was detained at work. Was there any opposition to the budget at the meeting?
Just the one...
No, just one person who tried to amend it. But now without amendment, it's pretty sound, I'd say.
What the gentleman wanted to do was cut out a program, so he was going to decrease the budget by $150,000 to cut out the program, and the board said, "We have the authority. If you cut that out, we have the authority to do as we want with that." It would not mean that program is cut. You can take $150,000 out of the budget, but that program can still possibly stay, and we would cut other things, so he...
So the idea that somebody is going to get a petition up to go after this vote, to reconsider it, I think is pretty slim. So I would think with the figures that they have now, they could tell us...
So they sold their school to the town or no? Yes. They did. So technically, all that can come out of the budget, too. So it's like almost $30,000 or $40,000 that's in the Athens Crafton budget that doesn't have to be there, you know? But because the question was followed, I couldn't say anything. I mean, maybe it's great to leave that in as a buffer, but it would be nice to get it down.
I mean, if it's in there and they don't spend it, it will be a surplus for next year, although I don't imagine there'll be much of a surplus in the school budget. So what do you want to do?
I mean, if V. L. C. T. says we don't need to have a town vote, and we can do it that way, just to put the due date as September 10, and due to Act 46... Act 46 budget, we won't be doing it until...
Until September 10. Now, are we still going to have to pay the school? Isn't that October 1st?
Yes.
Technically, they can't ask us to do that if we don't have our tax bill.
I think they can.
No. I understand that, but if we don't...
I think it's a statute that we have to turn over... The treasurer has to turn over all the school funds by that date.
From what I understand, the school has to be paid X number of days after we collect their taxes.
I was going to say, I think it's 20 days after you collect taxes.
And... And that's why we have to do one payment, because we only have one tax payment, whereas towns that have multiple tax payments, they don't have to pay everything all upfront. They only pay... Like, if they have quarterly taxes, they only pay a quarter of their school bill.
All right, so what do we want to do?
Let me ask you this question. Would the town have enough money to run all the way till October 20 without getting any revenue, and if people decide to wait until October 20 to pay?
Charlie has the balance sheet there.
Six hundred and two thousand, checking it.
Okay. I think he says...
Yeah, let's get a firm, firm answer to them on that. If we can change the date without another town meeting, or if we can just make it that we say it's the 10th that they're due on, but not make them delinquent... but not make them delinquent until, until the tenth of October, see what they say. Also, if we can get the figure from the school as to what it would be if, if there is no reconsideration of their vote, then maybe we can go ahead with that, and we can have a special select board meeting. Or I'm not even sure it's really up to us, it's more up to you.
No, it's the school.
Well, it's more up to the treasurer as to when to send them out. It's not necessarily our, we set the tax rate, but we don't say when you have to send this out.
No, but it has to be thirty days before they do.
Yes.
Would you be up until the tenth?
Yes. And we may have to vote to change the date, or we may have to have a special town meeting to do that.
Now, do we have enough time to have a special town meeting?
Thirty days.
So that would be...
Find out if we can still leave it at the, at the tenth of September, but not have them go delinquent until October tenth. And see if we can get the school figure.
School figure.
And get something in writing from the MAC Center at VLCT.
Yeah, I'll, I'll email them when they, when they come back. I mean, we really care about emailing them back, like, just being able to get the day and send it right back. I'll take a look, I'll see if I can... It's gotta be there, it just doesn't disappear.
You can make a look, no?
So you're all set with that? You're good with that?
Yeah, as long as we don't have to have a special town meeting, and as long as we have enough time to do that.
And we can always call a special select board meeting if we have to set the date to the tenth of October or something like that. If we can...
Without a town vote, you mean?
Yeah, without a town vote. We don't have to wait thirty days.
No, we just call it as a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Kind of special.
Special. All right. Anything else from boards and officials? Roads.
Okay, I got a couple things.
Oh, I have another thing.
Oh, why not?
The school is...
So, let's get that on there, and I'll make a motion that we allow that to be used. I'll hold some favor.
Charlie, do you wanna bring it back to the basin?
Oh, yeah, the what, the...
The, the basin, the...
Yeah. We went over the paving. And we had paid out seventy-four thousand, sixty-one, eighty-four in June. And then January, we paid out one sixty-nine, five sixty-three, thirty-five, which is two forty-three, six twenty-five, nineteen. And the total for the contract was twenty-three, two thirty-six, three thirty-nine, twenty-five. And then we have to add in the shoulders that we paid in July. And it looks, that comes to two fifty-three, six twenty-five, nineteen. And we got back from the state just a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So we actually owe, the town portion was seventy-eight thousand, six twenty-five, nineteen. So it was over.
Yeah, we had them, we had them do the shoulders after, after the bill.
Right, right.
But it still comes out of the paving line, part of the... So you're like ninety, almost ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars, didn't have to, well, it will be when the taxes come in.
You, you actually put sixty thousand this year.
Sixty thousand, yeah.
Yes. So it'll be a hundred and twenty-six.
All right.
When they redid that, that frost teeth over there, does that help? Are they sure they got it fixed, and there's not gonna be a problem?
They ain't gonna show them anything.
Oh.
They couldn't hump up down the road fifty feet from there. But it's, I think, I don't think that they're gonna bump again after taking the main boulder that we did out there.
Torquay fixed it the best they could.
There's no guarantee that it's gonna stop it completely.
Did we save those boulders?
Yeah, now, one drove back to the town garage, and someone went to...
Went to their pit.
Went to their pit.
But all there was with that uphill one was one boulder with a layer of sand, and the clay went right to the bottom of it.
All right, we'll move on to roads.
I thought we were...
Move, it was...
We moved to roads, then moved back.
Technically, basin is roads, so...
It is. How much, how far do they think they can get?
It all depends on how many cracks they got, but I believe they could probably do all thirty-five in a day, or pretty close to. There's not that many cracks up through there, up to, well, as far as Bill Morrison's.
I think what I would do is hide crack field this second that had been done. And then have them start back down to the town line and go as far as they can in the day.
Then that'll keep us under budget.
Yeah, and so if next year we do it...
We can take what's left over.
And we would do the same thing next year.
Did you say it was four four hundred again?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. We have eight thousand. So technically, they could be here two days, and we would still have most of the time.
We'd be four hundred over. That was their high-end estimate, he said.
All right, I'll make a motion that we, that we hire them, what's the, what's the name of the company, NUCO?
Yeah. Nykon, no.
Nykon.
Nykon.
Nykon, crack field.
I make a motion that we hire them at forty-two hundred dollars a day, that we start on the Brookline Road from the dirt out, and then start at the gravel line and go up on thirty-five.
So you just go ahead and come for the one day?
She walked two days.
I don't know. Is it worth doing the...
The line, all the way up thirty-five to the dirt, and from the dirt all the way to turn out by Bill Morrison.
But...
That was two days.
But that was pretty well cracked up at the time.
Had been done for a while, you're right.
So I'm thinking, I mean, there's certainly cracks in this up here, but it's not as bad as it seems.
Yeah, there are cracks, and there's also quite a bit that also needs to be repaved.
Well, yeah, from the council town line down to Bill Morrison's. Well, or pass there down the middle of the hill there where you stopped before coming up.
Stopped last by my day, just above the counter, by Bill Morrison's.
Yeah, well, okay.
Just having them on the one day.
Let's try it one day.
Then the other thing is, we were contacted by a...
Was there a second on that motion?
Tom seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We were contacted by a pit owner who was going out of business. And he has four thousand yards of gravel that he wants out of his door yard. And he gave us a price of fourteen dollars a yard delivered. And we don't have the money in the gravel account to spend a lot of money right now. And he said, if you guys wanna take the pile, he's willing to work with you guys, and to, you guys can make, set up a payment. I think that's a dollar fifty cheaper than what we bought it from the last person.
That's more gravel than we usually get.
Yes, but it's a...
It's take all or take none?
No, he'll bring you a thousand yards or whatever you want. He just, he wants the piledown, that's a really good price on fresh gravel. And it's decent-looking stuff.
Gravel right now is baiting, baiting it up to sixteen.
Yeah.
The topmost twenty-eight delivered.
Do we have any account?
About forty-nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, about forty-nine to forty-seven hundred dollars.
And how much are we getting when the taxes come in?
I think it was twenty.
Twenty, yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
It'd still be more than what we've budgeted.
You know, what would that come to? This is all this year, regardless of what taxes are...
Yeah.
This is this year's budget.
All right.
Yeah, it's like, no, just go on. You're not getting more than twenty thousand when the taxes come in.
All right, so this is all the way up. We're not getting another twenty thousand when taxes come in. We've already spent next year's budget that we just approved. So we only got forty-nine hundred dollars left, or more than seven. I just figured it was a big deal. I figured I'd let you guys know and figure out...
Or does he need an answer by?
As soon as possible. He's got, he wants to be closing his pit by October first, was it?
Yeah, something like, something like that.
He wanted to be out of there, let him off there, too.
So we've got money enough for, like, three hundred and fifty yards as all. If we buy, if we buy the three hundred and fifty yards, will he be reasonable with that? He happy with that?
Yeah, he just wants it out of his door yard.
That reasonable with you?
Yeah, we could, we could buy stock, what money we got.
And stockpile that?
Because I don't know if the town really wants to get into a big agreement on paying...
I don't think I'd wanna do that, because we really can't if we don't.
If they even vote budget down, then you're gonna be in trouble.
Yeah, and we can't, we can't spend money that we haven't been appropriate.
What they did, what did they do with the money from the sale of the property, or you?
Long hidden revenue.
Revenue.
Overets next week. Big Six is supposed to come tomorrow or Monday, and...
What about your big overets?
I haven't gotten prices back yet for them.
Did you set a date when we needed those back?
I haven't, I gotta still contact a few people. And, yeah, I'm gonna put the sand up beds.
Yeah.
And, oh, we tore into the little plow, because there was play in the, where the A-frame hooks on to the push part of the plow. And we gotta take that over to Rick's and get that welded back up. Just a minor repair. Other than that, everything's going pretty smooth.
All right, why don't we, I'll make a motion that we put out for the sand beds, how many yards?
I didn't put it out last month, but it'll be built up. So it should go back out again.
Back out again for August.
I'm gonna call a couple people, because there's a new pit, a new pit just opened up in Chester. So, and they, they've been at the garage. We would all have looked at the sand, it's really nice sand. And you still got Chester sand and gravel, we'll bid on it, too.
So we make a motion to put that out again for August. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
Delivered by September.
Yeah, by October, what?
Delivered in October, by October.
Because if we, if our taxes don't come in by October, so let's make it October. Does that give you playing time still, right? All right, warrants and mail.
Boom, done.
Done. And...
Telephone poles, what kind to put in? The state has approved one kind, but the Act Two Fifty Board in Wyndham County does not like the findings that the whole state is agreed upon, so they're fighting over telephone poles.
Yeah, I spoke to somebody from Green Mountain Power, and I asked him about that, and he indicated it's gonna be when, when they get their permit from the state.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something to do with, another thing, they got a couple, a couple of wet spots down there where they're having problems with putting a clutcher treated pole pole in there.
Well, the difference, they used to use creosote poles that are in the woods now. Now they use a different kind of chemical, and...
Pretty very good, probably into that?
But anything new.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Or heavy-duty conduit, isn't it, Tom?
Water line.
All right, executive session. I will make a motion to go into executive session where premature public knowledge would place the town of Athens at a substantial disadvantage, reference a personnel matter, and a legal...
Okay, I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?